Good evening. Good evening. It is seven o'clock on Wednesday, February 21st. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Meridian Library Board of Trustees. We'll begin with item number one on our agenda, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? We do not have anyone signed up for public comments, so we will move on then to item number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. We have six items, six items in our packet. Consent agenda items are routine matters that are voted on without discussion. Hopefully, all the trustees have had a chance to read through those items and I would entertain a motion. Go ahead, Josh. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number three on our agenda, the financials. We have the December financial reports and the dispersments items were included in our packets. Additional comments from staff. We also have the Finance Board report, which is in a different folder, but is there as well. Questions from the trustees?
Manager.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just one question. I just like to look at items that are large amounts that I don't recognize. So there's one on the bill payment for Patricia Lathan-Bald doing business as management Northwest.
Yes, that is our employment attorney. And her company along with management Southwest provide legal counsel on employment matters. They also have legal training that we send all of our managers and supervisors through.
Thank you. So I noticed there was a couple of furniture purchases, furniture type purchases in there. Just confirming that those are for the existing locations and not for the new locations or are busy.
Those are for the admin building that we leased in December.
Okay, I should have known that. Thank you. Other questions? I would entertain a motion on the December financial reports and dispersments.
I move that manager, sorry.
Go ahead, Laura.
I move that we approve the December financial reports and dispersments.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. We have a motion and a second further comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number four on our agenda. We have Justin Nyquist here from ICrimp to speak with us. Welcome.
Trustees for inviting me. I was told there's no specific questions, though I bet we're going to wade into a couple of specifics that we can discuss that we know. And apart from that, I put together just a short slide deck to kind of give an overview of ICrimp. I'm not sure if there's new trustees, how long everybody's been in place on the board, but this, just to give you an overview of what ICrimp provides for the library district. So first of all, and some of this is pretty basic, so you can tell me to speed it up and move along if you want, but what is ICrimp? We're a public entity ourselves. We're a JPA made up of all of our members, of which Meridian Library District is one. We have over a thousand members all around the state of Idaho. In the mid 1980s, commercial insurers dropped public entities across the board. They said it's too risky. It was a very hard insurance market, as we call it, and they said, public entities, you're out. So all across the country, they exist in virtually every state formed insurance pools to provide insurance for the public entities in that state. So ICrimp is kind of a child of that. We're licensed and regulated by the Department of Insurance, which is a little different from, say, pools in other states. Not all pools are regulated by their state's Department of Insurance. So we are extremely regulated by the Department of Insurance. They treat us like any other commercial insurance carrier that does business here. Ownership. So through the JPA of ICrimp, you actually own a little piece of us. With that, you have representation on our board as well. So it's a little more than just purchasing insurance from a commercial carrier. We don't underwrite to a profit. We don't make a profit. We exist merely to serve Idaho municipal corporations and local governments. In fact, that's all we're allowed to underwrite. We're not allowed to underwrite a 501(c)(3). We're not allowed to underwrite any private operation. Local government governance, we are here in Idaho. You have direct access to our Board of Trustees. You have direct access to our Executive Director, to our Director of Operations, to underwriting, to risk management. You can call us at any time. You can just swing by the office if you want. We have a lot of resources that we can provide and that we do provide to our members. We'll go to the next slide. So just as a broad overview, I'll just go through some of the coverages that you'll find in the ICrimp multi-lines policy that you have. Sexual molestation, not a topic anybody likes to talk about, but the molestation and abuse coverage is part of your ICrimp policy. Then we get to general liability. That's your injury and property damage to others. So third parties, slips, trips and falls, things like that. Auto, the physical damage of any vehicles, bookmobiles that you may have as well as liability if you cause a crash and others file that claim against the district. Employment practices, discrimination, retaliation, wrongful termination. We have a lot of things, both in our policy and in our member portal, risk management wise on human resources. It's one of our biggest claims areas. So we take a lot of effort to focus on human resources and employment. Errors and omissions, that's for you all. That's your decision-making coverage. In the commercial world, you might hear it as directors and officers. So this is essentially taking the place of a DNO policy. We have it in our errors and omissions. So that's the decision-making coverage. Employee benefits, if you fail to sign up an employee for health insurance and they have an unfortunate event and have some medical bills and they should have had coverage, but they were failed to sign up. That's what that coverage is for. Chemical spraying, I don't, you know, maybe a little roundup, but I don't think it's a a commercial spraying operation here. So that is included though. So you have that. Then the property. And this is, this is kind of by far, and we'll see a little later on, by far the largest aspect of the operation insurance wise that you have. So your buildings, your structures, your equipment, any of the perils, snow, wind, hail, fire, theft, or mechanical breakdown, machinery failure. Additional coverage is, we do have public land fire suppression, though that's not, not going to really apply to the district. Attorney consultation for employment. We have an endorsement that reimburses legal fees. So you have outside counsel kind of getting eyes on an employment situation before that action is taken. We use our defense panel of attorneys whose whole job is to defend public employers across the state of Idaho. So they have a lot of expertise and a lot of history in that field. So that, that is available. And again, if there's any questions on any of this afterwards that pop up, give me a call or an email and we can kind of wade in further about this. Cyber liability. That's a pretty important one for public entities. Public entities are a very easy target and libraries are up there because you provide access to the public as well. So cyber liability is included in this policy. Crime and embezzlement. And the crime section of the policy also takes the place of needing any surety bonds. So any public official surety bonds that are required by statute in the ICrimp policy takes the place of that requirement. So it's in lieu of that surety bonding requirement. So that's, that's why you don't need to go out and purchase individual surety bonds for your roles on the board. And also terrorism liability. So then, and if that is too small, if you'd like, I did bring larger ones if, if you'd like, so. So this is just, just a really brief underwriting and risk management review, just to kind of give you the, the landscape of where the library district is at. And frankly, it's, it's tremendously well. The library is a great ICrimp member and we, we very much value your membership. So for the 2324 renewal, that's the policy that started on October 1, 2023. The property deductible for the district is $2,000 per occurrence. The crime deductible is 5,000, cyber is 10,000, and then the employment deductible is 20,000. You'll see in parentheses there consultation waiver. One thing that's unique to ICrimp, I've never heard of another one doing it, is we waive that employment deductible under certain circumstances. So if we are notified prior to the negative action and say, yeah, looks good, it'll be waived in the event of a claim is filed later. The way it's worded in the policy is, and follows all reasonable advice. Again, this, this kind of is in tandem with that attorney consult that I mentioned earlier. A lot of members will use that in tandem. They'll use that attorney consult and through that funnels down later in the timeline if a claim is filed. We've got that, that there were already eyes on it. And this is a risk management effort. Like I said, it's one of our highest claims areas and it's an effort to make sure as best as we can that people are doing it right, to avoid messier circumstances and situations down the road. So it's not trying to be the, you know, the final yes, no decision. That's not at all what we want to be in the business of doing, and that's not what we do. We just have experts who can look at a situation. Maybe they recommend going this path instead of this path. Because they can see some of the pitfalls and some of the, the stickier situations that we might find ourselves in if taking a certain path. So I think that's as as coy as I can be about it. Coy is not the right word, but I'm trying to pick my words pretty carefully. But it's there to help protect you, but also help protect ICrimp. The premium is $62,000, just under 62. The payroll for the district went up 8% over last year. Again, that's not anything crazy. Over the last five years, that's 19% increase. Property values have gone up, but the Orchard Library is a big chunk of that. And that's up 28% over last year and over five years, that's gone up 42%. That's also in line with what we're seeing in the market. Everything is more expensive. Utilities, personal lines of insurance coverage, my homeowners went up without a claim being filed. My auto went up without a claim being filed. My wife's went up with the claim being filed. She's not watching, so I can say that. I am not married. So, you know, the, the cost of raw materials, construction materials, labor, everything is more expensive now. And in turn, that's what we're seeing in the insurance and it's, it's unfortunate. We don't like it anymore than you do. But it's just more expensive, namely on the property side. So that is the majority of the premium increase that we've seen for the district. To the actual increase in insurance costs and raw materials and labor that, that have to be paid in the event of a loss, as well as the growth in values themselves. Overall, the district has a 10% loss ratio, which is fantastic. 60% is kind of the break even, if you will, with all of the costs, the reinsurance we purchased to back us up in large losses, the operating costs. All of those factor in the commission to the independent insurance agent. After all of that is said and done, 60% of a loss ratio is kind of your break even because 40% is attributed to kind of those overhead costs of just being able to provide the insurance. So at 10%, the district is doing extremely well. The the numbers you see on the underwriting history on the bottom there, 2024 is the policy year we're in right now. I didn't put that in because it's, the year's not even up yet. So looking at those numbers wouldn't be a true, a true view. So we kept those off. There's an asterisk on 22 and 23. We call those undeveloped years. Liability claims in particular, we call them long tail. They take a long time to develop. There could be claims that something has happened already, but they haven't been filed yet. So that's why we call them undeveloped years. There could still be claims that fall under those years that come up in the future. So on the next page, this is just graphs of the property exposures, the payroll exposures, and then the member contribution, what you would call your premium in your own insurance. It just shows the growth over time. So from 2019 on the property, 11 million and it's up to just under 17 now. Payroll kind of trends the same. And then the contribution, I hope it's noticeable here, is that it, it goes up a little slower. And that's intentional. ICrimp has a Board of Trustees. There's 10 trustees. There are six county commissioners, two mayors and one special purpose district who would be your rep, and then a ex officio sheriff's representative on the board. They set premium caps every year. They say, you know, we're a public entity ourselves. We, we understand the struggles of the budgeting process and, and what's available. So many times, unless you were to build a $70 million library, your premium gets stair stepped up to where it needs to be. We don't take all of it in one year. We, we're really in it for the long term with our members. We value the long-term relationship and we want to avoid kind of the roller coaster of premiums that others might might pass along from year to year. So we try and moderate that and the board puts in caps every year to help moderate that. And with that, I think there's one more slide on the risk management side. And this is, this is the last slide of the presentation. Over the last five years, we have worked with the district 35 times. Now, this was in December, so if something has happened between now and then, I know it was a little tough to schedule for a couple, couple meetings there, so I do apologize for that. One of those being my fault and the other was of nobody's fault. So 35 risk management services ranging from employee terminations or employment actions to coverage for volunteers. I know that's very important with the library, whether it's a city or an independent district like yourselves. Contractual language, curbside service, ADA and FMLA and member portal training. And if, if you haven't accessed our member portal, there's a lot of valuable resources in there. Whether it's driving, cyber, human resources, you can skip the law enforcement part of that, but there's a lot of sample policies. There's forms. There's things that you can, you can really take anything you want out of there and use it word for word or change it to what you need. We also have online trainings. Our risk managers put on both live and recorded trainings on the portal over a wide variety of topics. I know employment came up with employment training and we offer a whole lot of that as well. So I think what supervisors love to hear is somebody recommending they take more training. But if, if you do want them to take training, if you want your volunteers to take training and your line employees to take training, we have training for all levels on the portal. So if you haven't taken a look in there, I suggest you do that to see if there's anything in there of use. I had our Director of Risk Management put this together. She would have been able to attend the meeting I couldn't attend, but she couldn't attend this one. So she sent me with this. And over the last five years, there have been 13 trainings given to employees or volunteers of the district. So there are people utilizing our, our risk management services, which is really good. We, we focus on public entities because that's all we know. So it's very tailored and specific to Idaho public entities. In the risk mitigation, these, these are what our Director of Risk Management put together for the district, just in generalities. These aren't, these aren't specifically tied to any loss in the past or any, any circumstance going on right now. These are just her biggest recommendations for your library district in things that we're seeing now that cause claims. So she just bullet pointed those out in a nice fashion for you. And that ends the actual slides. I know I get talking. I know there's, there's one thing in our policy that I'll address because I know it'll be asked and that's, that's our library materials exclusion. And if, if you weren't planning on asking me that, I was still going to bring that up. So let me just explain, and I'm talking to city libraries and I'm talking to library districts across the state. When they, when they call or email or have me come down, luckily I'm in the city. I actually got my library card before the meeting because I had a few minutes to spare. And with the toddler now, I know we're going to spend some time. So ICrimp and any insurer has one chance per year to update or change the policy. Once that policy is sent to you on September 1st, which is 30 days prior to the renewal, that's the contract. That's what we have. That's what we're bound to and that's what you're bound to. So we only have one chance and last legislative session with the library bill, it's a big unknown and it's still a big unknown. And the way that it was presented and I'm editorializing a little bit here, it's not word for word, but one of the sponsors of last year's bill actually stated that a goal was to make insurers back off. They wanted to make it uninsurable and it was. It was uninsurable for ICrimp. We don't like when that happens because we're here for our public entities in Idaho. But the way that it was written was not, and we knew it would come back this year. We didn't know in what fashion. So that exclusion was added because we didn't know what was going to be put forth this year. We still don't know what the final result this year is going to be. I mean, it, it changed again today. I think tomorrow they're reading it. The new library bill. So we have our lobbyist and board council actively keeping tabs and regularly meeting with us to kind of keep us updated on all of the bills that affect our members. This is by far the one we're keeping our eyes on the most this, this session so far. So we don't know what the result is going to be. We're going through the policy rewrites shortly here. We're going to start those discussions. They take a long time. So by the end of the session, we'll know what, what will eventually be passed or not passed. So we'll be able to kind of look at it again then. So I will say that there's no perfect answer. No matter what side, there's no perfect answer. So is this the best? But both the district, ICrimp and all our members are kind of bound by the, the playing field that the legislature creates for us. So we have to kind of see what, what those are before we can make any real decisions over next year's policy. But this year, we do have the library materials exclusion. The wording in this exclusion was taken directly from the bill that was presented last year. And our lobbyist and board, board council was involved in helping draft this. And it's, it's a little wordy because it was unknown and it still is a little unknown. So that is an exclusion in our policy that directly impacts the district. And if there's any questions about it, any further questions about it, in other states, we are seeing publishers and authors take action. So there's there's issues no matter what way our legislature goes. So we're still in the early stages of trying to figure out how to best serve our members with the rules that, that they're going to make for us and for you. So that's the best way I can kind of explain it. So if there's any further questions, I mean, we can discuss this as long as you want.
Thank you, Justin. Questions from the trustees? Go ahead, Josh.
Justin, thanks for the presentation. That was pretty informative. I just had a question in regards to with co-insurance type outfits like for myself, I use USAA and every year they have a return premium type opportunity where I think we had a great year. I understand that undeveloped years, you're going to have to have that. Does ICrimp ever do like a return premium based on what you paid in to go to co-insurance or losses?
We don't. And that's, that's something that is pretty prevalent in the commercial insurance world. And it's I'll equate it to auto sales, right? You could go to three different dealers and they're all running three different promos. And in the end, you're probably going to pay similar prices, given the same set of circumstances, right? Same money down, same APR, all that. So so different insurers have those programs. ICrimp in the past has run risk management discounts. The board has turned the direction of those discounts to law enforcement and law enforcement only right now. That, that's the claims area that ICrimp is focusing on for the discounts. In the past, it was open to everybody. So there was a one to 5% I think discount on the premium. So a little similar, but off the front end, but that has since kind of been turned due to the, the landscape of a different risk area increasing. So right now, there's no discounts available. So right now there's no discounts available for the district. But I can't speak to the future and, and kind of what the board will, will pivot to in the future. But those, those very well could come back at some point.
Fair enough. And once a, a claim is made and it's paid out, is the, is there an appeal? Say for instance, an HVAC goes out and there's some expenses incurred and ICRIMP says, okay, we're going to cut a check for this amount. Is there an appeal process if you were like, hey, we, we think it maybe was, you know, a little bit more was warranted in this situation?
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, you have direct access to our board of trustees. And as a member, you have access and you can appeal that or any number of things. So that, that absolutely is an option available.
One more question to just kind of disround curiosity. Is Idaho Department of Education a member of ICRIMP?
No. So though we're only allowed to write public entities in Idaho, we don't write state level. They, they go through, I think department of risk management or division of risk management is kind of the state's in-house. They, they self-insure and probably buy some umbrella on top of that. So.
So thank you, Justin. So amending or adding on to Josh's question, is there a formalized appeal process with steps written out? Or I just call my buddy, Megan Evans?
Yes, Madam Chair. Let me, uh, let me get to it. I am really glad I brought a copy of the policy. And also what I can do is I can email whoever I am instructed to email and actually copy and paste this. So, so you have it.
That would be great.
So there is a dispute resolution procedure. And it is in the general conditions of the policy. It's general condition number seven. And that outlines that dispute resolution procedure.
Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Josh.
A question on the library thing or the legislative action, and this is purely speculation. Are we better off if a bill passes? Will ICRIMP then reconsider based on what bill passes this year? Or are we, I'm, I'm guessing the status quo would be if no bill passes again this year, ICRIMP would be inclined to leave that status quo policy.
Like every insurer in the world, I wish I had a crystal ball. And the landscape changes so rapidly. I just don't know. I would, I would lean towards that exclusion will most likely remain in the next policy year. But again, that's all dependent on what passes, what doesn't pass and what the final, you know, boundaries of the, the playing field, so to speak, are. Well, we are currently taking a look at everything in the policy. And that's, that's one thing that we, we absolutely are discussing. We just don't know yet and we can't, we can't really know until we know what it, what it's like. So I would, I would lean towards that's going to be in the next policy year. And our hope is that if something is passed, it's, it's, it's got a process that can be taken to kind of avoid those situations if at all possible. That would kind of be a, a best case instead of the one that was presented last year. So.
So another hypothetical for you. So, so if we imagine that the legislature doesn't pass something this year, seems unlikely, but. And then as our year progresses and our legislature is out of session and you have legal action in Florida and Texas and Arkansas and Iowa that makes its way through. And by the time we get to the 25th session, perhaps the legislature uses, loses its appetite for this kind of legislation. So then we have nothing happening. Are we still in the status quo? Right?
That would, and we do look at what, what's happening in other states. As I mentioned, we, we know publishers and authors are taking action against their books being taken off the shelves. So West Virginia just passed something. So it's, it's definitely gaining traction and it's, it's being heard in many legislatures around the country. And they're all doing it a little differently, I think. So it's, it's hard to know. But like anything in insurance, when we're talking about liability, when you're actually dealing with third-party liability, you really, the longer time goes on, the more clear picture you have because you've seen those cases progress through, you know, the outcomes in different jurisdictions, you know, the outcomes in different district, different districts. So it's, it's one of those things that's almost impossible to, to know for sure. So we can hypothesize, but it's, it's changing every day. So the hope is to get as good as we can get. And you know, the policy will follow suit with whatever, whatever we're handed. So we take a look at it to see what's even possible. As I mentioned, last year it was just uninsurable with the way it was presented. So with something this year, whatever passes, we'll retake, we'll, we'll take another look at that to look at the insurability. Something like this is not, insurance companies all rate on different things, different exposures. We use payroll and we use property values. There's a whole lot of other things that reinsurers and others look at. Employee counts, number of vehicles, age of buildings, all these other things. We keep it pretty simple. This is not something that has ever been contemplated in the rating of premium before. So it's something that being brand new in the landscape is really tough to know how to rate for that exposure. So that's kind of the best I can, I can answer it.
So I'm hearing, I don't know.
It, it's a lot of, I don't know. And I, I would, I would not, we, it's kind of a running joke. We get a lot of hypotheticals thrown at us and it's really hard to hypothesize because coverage for any claim can only be determined with that specific claim, subject to the terms, conditions, exclusions in the policy that's in force. So that's property and that's liability. So you can hypothesize about a very specific thing, but in reality, the claim that's filed is going to look a whole lot different than you hypothesized. So hypothetical situations are kind of not our best friend.
Understood. I'll try to ask something more specific if I may.
Yep.
Okay. So thinking about ICRIMP coverage and the intersection with policy, right? In our list of risk management strategies, we're encouraged to create good policy. So under Senate Bill 1289, right, we're going to have, this body is going to have to formulate a cop policy that complies to that, that bill become law. Earlier in our agenda, on our consent agenda, we had our internet access policy, also a statutory requirement. And that, that key phrase, the library materials exclusion, that, that specific phrase also comes up in the internet access statute. So it's not brand new for ICRIMP, right? That phrase has shown its face before.
It has.
So the question I'm trying to get to is as we're formulating policy, how do we think about insurance coverage relative to that policy? Does ICRIMP get involved in that at all? Do you just accept that we've created good policy? What, how does that work?
We have members with all, some members have a social media use policy. Some members do not. Some members have a very all encompassing personnel handbook. Some members have what you could call a personnel policy. So we leave it up to our members for their own internal policies. We do however, weigh in on those when we're asked. So we, we do policy reviews. A lot of times we do them through the risk management lens that gets filtered through our risk managers. And they, they look at that and they hear from all the members across the state and they keep up with all across the country what's going on. So they, they are the ones that usually will not advise, but provide suggestions on policy. Cause they've seen it in other members' policies or in other states' members' policies. So we do do policy reviews is, is what I'm getting at, Madam Chair.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you, Justin. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number five on our agenda. We have the Pinnacle Construction and FFNE. We have three purchases to contemplate. Hi, Jason.
Hey, how's it going? Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees. I wanted to give you a quick update on the progress of our Pinnacle branch. I visit the branch, that little trailer, blue trailer there every couple of weeks to get a progress update. And it is going fantastically well. Knock on wood, salt over the shoulder. Everything is going really well. Construction is moving fast. There was a holdup with steel trusses for a little bit. That's, it's been resolved. Since this picture's been taken, all four walls have been enclosed and I believe the roofing is done as well. So once they complete all that stuff, they're comfortable here in the next couple of months, getting a lot of the trade people in to do the AC units, HVAC system, things like that. So knock on wood, we were, I believe part of our contractual obligation, or I'm sorry, CM's contractual obligation to the library was to receive this building at the third week of September. We are on track to receive possibly to, for them to be completed by the second week of August, barring any more construction, any more weather delay. So it's going on really well. Silverstone lease, we've already notified Sundance Companies that we are intending to not to renew our lease for October 1st, 2024 and beyond. So they've already, they've acknowledged the email. We're going to send a certified letter just in case they missed something, but they've already planned, they're already getting ready to repurpose the, our, our current Silverstone property for other things. So before I, before you, I, I have three contracts. The, they're being brought before you because of their dollar value. But the cool thing about these contracts is they're being purchased off of existing cooperative agreements. So we actually don't have to go out to bid for any stuff. It's already been bidded. And that was done, all the, the board back in January 19, 2022, at the 19, 20, January 19, 2022 meeting had already approved that we joined free, the NASBO contracts, Omni contracts, a lot of the co-ops that work with education state entities. So we're already part of all these. If you look at the LINGSO contract, this contract is a little different. We took advantage of a provision in state, in statute 672807 that allows us to buy off of cooperative purchasing agreements from other organizations. So, and that the board approved. We were purchasing off the Washington County Library Systems in Oregon. And that was approved by the board on July 15, 2020 to purchase off that contract. That contract did expire January 31st, 2023. There was a three-year extension on that contract. I talked to our legal counsel at Borton Lakey and they said, because none of the terms change, it's just an extension that we can continue using that contract. The great thing about the contract is that it was all bidded before COVID. So it's all pre-pandemic pricing. And that one, I, what you have before you, the original packet that, that you received was 174,000 and some change. The one that was amended that Dan printed out and gave to you is 178,000. And that's because we asked for three extra bins, the carts that we can have the books inside. So it's a little more and I, so there's that one there. There's the contract for Space Savers. That's a contract for the shelving. We anticipate on doubling the shelving? More than the double shape, doubling the shelving that we currently have at Silverstone at the new Pinnacle property. So plenty of room for books and we'll have to say there's a fireplace. So it'll be really cool. I know there, that was something that Dusty pushed for and the architects really wanted to do was have this beautiful fireplace in the adult lounge. I mean, really consider Pinnacle, your living room away from home. So it's really cool. So yeah, we have the Space Saver contract there. That's 119,000. I do need to point out that 26,000, that is off contract. So that is not part of the Sourcewell contract that we're buying off of. However, it does fall well below our $75,000 threshold to have to go out and bid for that. So, and then the third contract is Freeform. That one is our entire furniture package that we're looking at with NASBO, our national contracts and with our contracts with Omnia Partners. It's 45% savings just automatically. So three contracts. The motion that I would hope to have the board approve is a motion to allow us to generate the POs and execute these contracts. So we can get the furniture ordered for the new Pinnacle branch.
Thank you, Jason. Questions from the trustees? Go ahead, Josh.
All right. Jason, just one question about the, the shelving of the books. So the Silverstone facility shelving is going to be relocated as well. So, and we're buying the mechanic lever, double-sided Space Saver?
No, we're, we're, most, most of the shelving we're going to offer up to other entities in, in the Idaho library community. If they want to use those, they, they're just not compatible with what we're looking for in terms of design. If you think about, even if we were to bring over 1,000 square feet of, 1,000 linear feet of shelving, you can't find another three or 4,000 linear feet to match it in terms of design. So it's, it's best for us to just to buy a brand new package. There are a couple of the freestanding movable shelves that we are going to bring over for book sales, for friends of the library and for the holds area. So we do try and, we do hope to repurpose as much of the furniture as possible that's new. But we recognize that some of the stuff we, we will end up getting rid of or offering to other agencies.
Other questions? So I have a couple. On the materials handler, there's a couple of things that are listed as accessories. Are they included in that 178 total? Are they add-ons? Or are they just?
That's the total price.
Okay.
Yeah. This LINGSO sorter, I don't have it with me, but in the blueprints, there's a holds area and then in the holds area, there's, it connects, there's a, there's a feed. You can drop off your books in the holds area and it feeds the machine. The way that works though is it ends up making probably 100 square feet of the wall of that space unusable. So LINGSO is actually designing a drawbridge. So while they stop being used, we can just turn off the machine, lift the drawbridge and now you've got a little storage space back there. So the Orchard Park contract, I'm sorry, the Orchard Park system, with the exact same system. That one was about 140,000 under the same contract. They're both 11 bin systems, about the same size. What's increased the cost of this machine is the second book drop. Where Orchard Park, the feedback that we got from Jenny was you've got this holds area, you've got a manual book drop. And then now you've got to cart this entire thing all the way across the library in order to drop it off. So when we designed Pinnacle, it was really focused on having everything in the same place. And that second ingress machine entry point for the book drop inside the holder room unfortunately is I believe a $38,000 addition. So it wasn't cheap.
Speaking of, can you comment as relative to budget and, and for the FFNE? And I think on the budget that we looked at, we had kind of a lump sum for FFNE. How does this, these contracts fit in with that? Are you, where are you expected to be?
Yeah, I believe checking with them during this whole conversation, we were well in line with what we were looking at. Knowing that we were buying off the same contracts with, especially with the LINGSO. I mean, we bought in with 2020 pricing. So it was, it's extremely advantageous for us. And the way I had written into the contract when it became, when it was a Washington contract and became an Idaho entity contract for the Meridian Library, I actually wrote it, I actually asked them to write into the statute that any other library can buy off of it. And I know that Boise was able to purchase the LINGSO system off their contract that hadn't do any of the bidding. And they bought a 21 bin system as well. So. And they bought a twenty one bin system as well. So yeah, saving quite a bit of money.
Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Laura.
In regards to, in regard to the offering of the shelving, is that offering for sale? Or is that just offering, hey, we have shelving libraries, you want to come get it?
I can't remember the age of the shelving unit. I believe it's about eight, eight or so years old. I think we fully appreciated it. I, I for one would be willing to offer it up to any other Idaho library at no cost, but if the board. Would like us to recover some of the cost, we're more than happy to explore that, some kind of low cost option, just so those libraries have other. Expanded, they have options, basically.
Go ahead, Nick.
Laura, to that point. When we get closer to that point, we can look at it, but typically. When something like this happens at an institution like ours. Will want to give it away. So that they come pick it up and take, so we don't have to dispose of it essentially. It's, it's, it saves us the disposal fee.
Go ahead, Josh.
Nick, just to piggyback on that, you know, my real estate mind is always thinking about reverts and recapture costs, but. So my immediate thing, thinking was, well, we can get a few bucks out of that, but. Role of the Meridian Library District and the status that we have amongst the community of libraries, if we can pass it along to somebody and helps out another library. That's us leading the way and serving as a good, you know, a good role model to stewardship of properties, I think. So.
I'm a big, yeah, I'm a big proponent of the state surplus website and we've received. Tens of thousands of dollars in equipment, technology discounts on vehicles and things like that from them. So I'm, I'm more than happy to pass on that love. So.
Thank you. I would echo that, Josh. Like some of our fellow libraries around the state are really operating on quite the shoestring. So. And and they would still have to come and get it, right? So. All right. Other questions? All right. Entertain a motion to. Three contracts for furniture and equipment purchases.
Madam Chair.
Wait, I'm sorry, Laura. I'm going to restate that. The motion would be to authorize staff to execute those contracts. And generate a PO. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize staff to execute the three contracts for Pinnacle F F and E. And execute the PO.
Thank you, Laura. Nick is advising them that we should do them separately. So. I did not print them all out, but can we, is it sufficient if we cover them by topic or do we need the vendor's name?
Topic is sufficient.
Okay. Laura, would you be willing to amend your.
Absolutely.
Motion to cover the furniture contract.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, I move to. Approve. The contract for the Freeform furniture and authorize library staff to issue a PO.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Brings us to item five B, the contract for shelving. Madam Chair. Go ahead, Laura.
I move that we approve the contract for the shelving and authorize. Staff to issue a PO for said shelving.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to item five C, the contract for the automatic materials handler.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Laura.
I move that we approve the contract for the automated material handling system and authorize staff to issue a PO for said contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. I'm so excited. Every time I see the pictures and we're buying the furniture, it's so close.
And as we get closer, we'll obviously start offering tours to the board to see what's going on. These videos are being offered by CM's drone pilot, so commercial drone pilot. So we're getting updates every couple of weeks and. As I said, every time we drive by, it just, it becomes fuller and fuller and it. I might be biased, but it looks like it's a gorgeous space.
Yeah, I'm super excited and just kudos to CM for, that was a very aggressive timeline and so far so good. So.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alrighty, that brings us to item six, A, six, item six on our agenda, the Director's Monthly Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will try to be quick since I know this is already a longish meeting. So. We'll go through, HR has been busy. We only have five open positions currently. And that's very good considering we currently have, I think, when I looked this morning, one hundred and seven. Employees on staff currently. So doing really well with open compared to. I think the summer when we had twenty some. So doing really well. They're staying busy. They're getting lots of applicants for. Many of the positions, but not all of the positions. So it's kind of interesting to see which ones are. Getting traction, which ones aren't. Foundation provided their annual report. It's on their website and they were able to donate. A hundred and, or fundraise a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars last year. Went to a lot of things at Orchard Park, the sensory installation, early literacy, a lot of the technology and furniture packages that went above what. We had been able to fund through the. The library's budget process and they were also able to give money to help repair the Bookmobile last year, which was greatly needed because that machine is on its last legs. And so really happy to have the foundation supporting us and getting us additional capital funding as we go through with, through with. Our plant facility projects. A couple of updates from operations, which is Jason's team. We had the heater malfunction and. Caused some damage to shoes of employees as they cleaned up the mess and we were able to get that reimbursed. And that went through. They were able to close on E-rate funding. E-rate funding is a mechanism for us to pay for network equipment with category two. Category one, I believe, is the internet service itself. Category two is for the hardware that allows us to put the network equipment into our facilities. Material services is going great. We have a new manager that is doing amazing in there and. Just waiting on a few things to get going for Pinnacle, which is going to be a big ramp up in. Getting all the material ready by late summer and then strategic initiatives, working on some centennial planning and. Doing some things at the senior center to try out new ideas. Collection maintenance added about the same amount as our average. I added these in, I shouldn't say I, I asked that other people add these in. For, to give us context to the numbers that we we show every month. So we're right on our average for added. We didn't remove as many, but we were much higher with our patron initiated request. The computer lab, right on average for usage for. Number of users, hours spent, all of that. Again, trying to give you some context to what these numbers mean rather than just the raw numbers. And then next, you have this in your packet with the Seals Report, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that are happening at our branches. The Yule Ball at Cherry Lane was a very big event, very well attended. People got really excited about that one. The friends of the library have met with Orchard Park staff and are looking at. Future book sales to take place at Orchard Park. They're really also getting their programs up and going and the the public is. Latching on to those, especially some of those storytimes that they're doing over there. The fairy tale, fairy tale tea party at Silverstone, another really fun event that the the community was excited about and. I attended the AI or part of the AI and small business. Presentation at Unbound and we had that presenter also. Two days ago at our staff day as well. So doing some fun things with programs, looking at circulation. Again, getting some of these averages in here helps us see some of the context in terms of not just year to. Year-to-date information, but kind of what, what to expect as we look at each month. So for, or our average, we're up. For the check-ins and checkouts and our account created is really doing quite well. And then door count is right about average. Reference questions are down on average, but up for the year. Three D prints up on average, down for year and outreach is up across the board. And then programs, seeing a few fewer in the early learning programs, but a lot more in the adult and senior area. And that can be a number of things, but largely if we're looking at the demographics of our community, they've shifted quite a bit in the last ten years. And so. It, we're trying to be cognizant of that and meet the the demand of our, of our changing demographics. So. Not to the point of removing, you know, our bread and butter, but making sure that we are increasing in areas that. Are seeing a needed increase. And you can see that with our program attendance numbers as well. And this is something that I wanted to bring in. We were going to do the three D printing and. Equipment statistics. We need to do some. Additional look at how to display it correctly with some of the information that I wanted to share. So instead, we're doing a quarterly look at. The room reservations and so doing a deeper dive on to some of the things that we don't cover on a monthly basis. And so this is the first slide that shows the room reservations for each location. So this is Cherry Lane. Orchard Park and next one is Unbound. We can go back to the Cherry Lane one real quick. I'll just kind of run through the numbers, but. We're looking at this room being reserved by the public nine times a month last month. Small conference room, this little one across the way is fifteen times. And then the study rooms are in heavy use, especially after school. And that's where you see a hundred and forty six uses last month. And so right around our averages for the large conference room and the study rooms. But a little bit higher on the small conference room. And that's one of the reasons as we go through these. It's been important for us to have different room options for the public in Orchard Park, in Unbound and in Pinnacle. This is one of the highest demand resources and services that we provide currently to Meridian. Orchard Park, we don't have any year-to-date because we've only been open since May, but we do have averages for the month and we're right around. Our averages for the last month with the conference room and then the smaller study room over by the. Large print section and on the west side there. Unbound, those numbers are way up. If you've been in there recently, you'll almost guarantee to see somebody in. At least one of the the three rooms upstairs that has it reserved. And unlike. Something where you don't have captured here though, is how many, how long they spent in these rooms. I can tell you anecdotally that the time spent in the Unbound rooms is is quite a bit higher than we see in some of the other rooms across the district. And so, you know, looking at the sound studio, the record room. Seeing that we have forty nine people, forty nine sessions, I should say, a month is very encouraging to know that that was a worthwhile investment for the district to. To put funds and resources towards creating that as an opportunity for the public. So. Those were room reservations. Then, like I said, just wanted to do something different each month that we do a deeper dive into and then what we share with. The, the stats that came before this. So we're going to try to incorporate more of the different, different things each month throughout the quarter. And then just finishing it off with some pictures of programs that we had at all of the locations the last month or so. Some of which might have happened in February, but they were good pictures. So.
Thank you, Nick. Questions from the trustees? Go ahead, Josh.
The only question I had was about Orchard and the yoga program. Because that's not something that springs to mind when I think of the library. Is that like a non-conflicting kind of thing? I have this image of like hot yoga and sweaty and smelly and not really pleasant.
Yeah.
Please tell me it's not like that.
To my knowledge, it is not. Also not a program that I have attended. So I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm almost positive it's hosted by a. Community member and they come in and provide that service.
But it's not a business generated, operated out of the library.
No, no. All, all programs that we have are free. We don't have any charges to our programs. We have had in the past, we've had. An organization who would come in and do not yoga, but a stretching service called Fit and Fall Proof. And it's aimed at. Seniors mostly, but anyone who has mobility issues to learn how to be able to stretch and move and. Be more limber for normal day-to-day tasks. That has, it's not happening right now, but that is similar in line with the yoga program. Oh, is it still happening? Last I heard, it was gone. So unpause it. Okay, we're, we're. There we go. We have a lot of programs.
And I am okay with it.
Yes. Until they tell me not to. Yes.
I think the meeting room policy, which comes before us in the next item, I think it specifically. Excludes charging of fees to attend a program, right? So there's no, nothing allowed, but. Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
I have a question for Nick. On the program for the programs for the statistics for the school age group, the six to twelve. They look stagnant. I think. Let me go back to that slide. Oh, they're slightly down. My, my question is, how cyclical is that? Because I know there are certain times of the year that those will go back up and then those will drop down and.
I don't have a. A research answer for you. I can give you my best guess. Throughout the school year for school age, it's going to be kind of flat. In the summer, you'll see a big increase in school age, but you'll see a giant decrease in teen. But during the school year, the teen numbers will be a lot stronger and a lot of that is driven by the Cherry Lane program. Schedule and the proximity to the middle schools and high schools. And so, and then. Just in terms of school age, it's, you know, I have school age children. It's much harder to do something during the the school year because you have so many other commitments and. You don't want to leave the house sometimes. And, but in the summer, you want whatever you can do to get them out of the house. And so those numbers definitely skyrocket in the, in the summertime.
All right. Further questions? All right. Then we will move on then to item number seven, the Joint Powers Agreement and Bylaws for the Links Library Consortium. We were provided a draft of. These previously because it's a pretty hefty document to read. So hopefully everybody has had a chance to go over that thoroughly. Anything to add, Nick?
Yes. So we've been working on the. Yes. So we've been working on the joint powers agreement for, I don't know, 18 plus months. It was something that kind of had fits and starts. And eventually last summer, we brought on Adam Christensen from Holly Troxel to guide the process through as an independent attorney that is not representative of a library or is not a library's general counsel. Because every library's general counsel had differing opinions. Luckily, we had Joe and his team that represent multiple libraries. So we were able to be on the same page with like, what, two, three different libraries? And so that made it easier. But the cities all had different opinions. So we've had a lot of attorneys' eyes on this and now we're ready for all of the governing boards of the libraries and the Link's Consortium to get this passed. So this allows us to formalize the Link's Consortium with a state approved governing body and not a loose configuration of libraries. This is a a legal standing, just like Icrimp is a JPA. We will now have a joint powers agreement association organization that is the Link's Consortium, which will be able to then like hire a an administrator will be able to take on contracts and things like that. So.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Josh.
So not not so much a question as an observation. The amount of work that goes into a JPA is staggering and timeline is much longer than you would expect, you know, or the members of the public would expect, I would assume. But I just wanted to point out that the fact that the Birmingham Library District is its own entity, separate from the city of Birmingham, whereas a lot of libraries have their library within the city. I think that presents some huge benefits and and also some challenges, particularly in the ratification of this document. So I guess my question is, what's the timeline for this becoming official? Is there a projected? You know, because I look at this and I think this is going to take another 18 months to get everybody to sign off. By that time, legislation may have passed that will drastically impact the capabilities of sharing information and resources amongst the consortium.
And great question. So this is something I think I initially brought to you, you all like October-ish with some of the first drafts and we've been trying to have all the directors talking to their boards for at least, you know, this amount of time so that we can get it every board to or council, board or council to approve it in January or February or March. So this month or next month. So and the anticipation is that all entities will sign off and agree to have it agreed to by the end of or the middle of March. And that's why we brought in the third party legal and then had it reviewed by each of our our own council so that it went through as many layers of review as possible so that it would hopefully not get stuck anywhere. That's the goal.
Nick, I would just ask you to comment on the funding formula or the cost sharing in section 4.8. So although the document is lengthy, I appreciated it very much. It's it's well written and simple and straightforward. And then the consistencies between the JPA and the bylaws, I mean, that's it's not easy to get there and and it's well done. So to me, the the funding formula seems quite straightforward. Can you comment on how that compares to the existing funding formula? And if you have any sense of is this cost going up for Meridian or cost going down?
So the cost might go in raw doll, like in just total number, yes, it's going up for us and by the addition of Orchard Park. So if we look at just a total number, that's to be expected. Percentage wise, it's pretty negligible for us. Some of the other libraries have seen larger increases due to now being a courier. All Link's libraries are courier libraries. Previously, we had the Emmett Public Library, Twin Falls Public Library, Haley Public Library, which has since dropped out, and Mountain Home Public Library as Link's members that were not courier members, meaning items could not be transferred between our locations. And the the new setup allow is already started, but allows all of the libraries to be courier libraries. And so those libraries have seen an increase. Some of the other cost sharing pieces don't really ever kick in with the exception of Garden City and Boise. And it's based on usage, like a high, a higher usage of Garden City's content or resources by Boise cardholders. So but even that is pretty small. For us, it never kicks in. Never has. The formula is is very straightforward and I'm I'm extremely comfortable with where the these formulas are for us. It's it's very manageable. We'll see some additional costs as a as the Link's Consortium or as the JPA entity. Because things like bringing on, like I said, an administrator that's going to be able to see day to day operations make some of the things a little easier for the directors and rest of the library. But some of that will also come out of the reserves that the Link's Consortium currently has as well. So some of the increases that we'll see will be gradually implemented over the next five years. So no library will get hit with something that they're not able to afford, you know, things like migrating the ILS system to the cloud, adding on the Vega layer for the patron experience to the ILS. Those things have, they get cost shared, but we also use reserves to to offset large budget hits. So.
Madam Chair. Go ahead, Laura.
Nick, I have a question about the cataloging that goes, like how everything's cataloged and joined together.
I will do my best.
This might not pertain to this agreement at this time, but maybe down the road. My wonder is, one of the things that drives me crazy about cataloging is that some libraries will catalog an item in one area and then another library will catalog that item and shelve it somewhere else. So it might be like in a teen section of one item that for what for one library and the adult section for another library. Is there any discussion about how to establish more consistent cataloging?
So from a cataloging standpoint, there's a lot of things that we've we've done and continue to do to increase consistency with cataloging. In terms of shelving, which that would relate to, which is not necessarily the cataloging. That that's going to always be more, much more subjective. And I would not envision that ever being something that is controlled by the the consortium entity. It allows for better local control of where an item should be for that audience.
Thanks, Nick. I appreciate the work on this. It's it's pretty, you've talked about it, not just since October, but really since I was elected to the board three years ago. So. Additional questions?
Nick, can you talk about the administrator position? And is that a position been filled already or someone looking at it? And I just want to make sure that they're not looking at you as, hey,
It is, the position is not filled. It is not even created yet. So we we've been working on what that job description is, trying to figure out what the rate of pay should be to be commensurate with the level of work that it's going to require, but not to jeopardize losing a director necessarily. So trying to find that balance because it it's a very, excuse me, niche position that's going to have a lot of responsibilities that are hard to quantify right off the bat. And no, it it will come in under my pay rate. So I will not be going for that. Although the some days, you know, it does sound like a good option. But no, you will not lose me to that position and I'm not taking on a second.
Other questions? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the Joint Powers Agreement and Bylaws for the Link's Library Consortium.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Laura.
I move that we approve the Joint Power Agreement and Bylaws for the Link's Library Consortium. Thank you.
Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number eight on our agenda, job descriptions. We have the junior librarian job description in our packets and both hopefully everybody's had a chance to review that. Anything to add there, Nick?
This is a job description that hadn't been updated to be formatted like all the other ones that we saw going through in the last six months. And we're ramping up to be able to hire that position, hopefully for the summer. And so wanted to make sure that we got it through and it's in its cycle. So it was time to make some major changes that took it out of being consent agenda worthy.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions on the job description?
A question.
Go ahead, Destiny.
Since this position is open to high school students, potentially under the age of 18 and therefore minors, it looks like they could potentially have access to materials that would be restricted if legislation were passed. So is that something that we need to consider in the job description? Or would that sort of policy restricting access for those employees exist elsewhere?
That is a great question. I would say at this point, since nothing has passed, that we don't write anything in until there is a law that has that we have to adhere to and we can readdress it at that point. We already have minors that work at our library, both as pages, but also volunteers. So if something does come with legislation, we will have to take not only a look at the policies, but how do we adjudicate current staff and volunteers and what impact does that have with their ability to do their job? What ability does that do for people that, you know, volunteer services that we have? It could, depending on what passes and and how and all that, it could have, you know, giant ripple effects across lots of things that I don't know. But until something passes, I don't, I wouldn't recommend putting something in until we we know. Rather than guessing, I guess, would be the my my recommendation.
Thank you, Nick. And I'd throw up a word of caution as well, right? The legislation currently being contemplated is is reactive, so to speak, right? So somebody has to come forward with a request for an item to be reconsidered under the legislation. We don't proactively go out and restrict a bunch of materials. Somebody has to come forward and say, this is an item that should be relocated. And our experience is that does not happen, right? If I recall correctly, in 2023, we had one request for reconsideration. So I think I think it's policy questions that we need to think about carefully, but also be cautious as as to the scope of the problem that we're we're considering counterweight to our young people that love working at the library and taking that opportunity. I remember when the junior librarian program started here and I remember who the first one was. And she gave out books in the park that that were removed from a collection, not our collection, but I'll bet you can guess. Right? So I would just let's think about the policies holistically and and wait and see what the impact to our young people that have had very positive experiences in the library and would likely have the support of their parents as well. If there's no additional questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the junior librarian job description.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Destiny.
I move to approve the junior librarian job description.
Thank you. I second. Thank you, Laura, for the comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item nine A, our or item nine, our policy reviews. As the board is aware, that we do do a routine periodic review of all of our policies. And sometimes we have amendments and sometimes we don't. So we do have some changes on the items before us, beginning with nine A, the meeting room policy. This is provided in our packet in red line and clean version. Nick, anything to add there?
This is one that we've spent several months on. All of the policies have been reviewed by legal. We do have one recommendation on the unattended youth, one that we'll bring up, but no, I don't have anything to really add that's not in here.
Just to remind the board, we have talked about the meeting room policy at length. This creates a limited public forum, if I'm using the word correctly. Right? So folks have a right to use the the meeting rooms without regard to the content or viewpoint of what they might be doing there, provided they follow the rules that we've laid out in the policies. This is an important one for us. And and I think that our are making our meeting rooms available, as Nick discussed at length in his report, is just a great reflection of our commitment to inclusivity in our community and and making things available to all users. Any questions here?
Madam Chair, I will say some of the changes do allow us to proactively charge for the room reservations that go beyond the the first free hour. And by doing so, we purchased a module for our website that allows us to finally allow allow users to pay for those room reservations online. And so we'll be able to do that. The the one thing that I would ask in passing the motion, it would be that if you pass it would in the motion, make it so that the the policy is not initiated until doesn't start until March 1st to allow us time to implement the the new software. And something that I would like us to maybe consider with all policies going forward is that the policies don't take effect until the first of the the month following the meeting. That way, it allows us time to communicate to staff any changes in policy procedure, structure, training. And it allows us to get all of the backend processes in place. So rather than having it go be effective immediately have it policies be effective the first of the month. So at a minimum, I would request that this one, but it's something that I would like us to consider going forward with all policies as well.
Thank you, Nick. Further questions here? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting room policy with an effective date of March 1, 2024. Go ahead, Josh.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting room policy as presented with an effective date of March 1, 2024.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Laura. Further comment? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item nine B, the naming opportunities policy. Again, presented to us in red line and clean version. Nick, additional comments here?
No, no major changes. A lot of cleanup changes. That's a bulk of the red line that you'll see. But trying to make it a little easier to understand the process for which we would accept and move forward with donations that would go towards naming of rooms, equipment, spaces, vehicles, things like that. And hopefully, we can get some.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions on the naming policy? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the policy, sorry, I lost my, approve the naming opportunities policy with an effective date of March 1.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Laura.
I move that we approve the naming opportunities policy with an effective date of March 1.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item nine C, our unattended youth policy, again, in red line and clean version in our packets. Nick, comments here?
So with this one, I would like, I'm trying to find, we've also forgot the line numbers, so I apologize. But the first line on the last paragraph, taking out the, believe, let me double check, make sure that I'm looking at the right one. No, sorry. Last line on the first paragraph. Strike that. That's where we're looking at. If we could strike that from the, I'd propose striking that entire line. But other than that, it is trying to clean up some of the policy language that we have and just make it consistent. Correct. The library is not responsible for monitoring youth's access to materials found in library collection. So that was an addition that we had in the red line. But the request is to strike that addition entirely.
Nick, and just to verify, the, the striking of that line does not imply that the library district is in fact responsible for monitoring.
No.
It's at a later date, like some, nobody's going to come back and say, hey, well, you guys had this in policy and you took it out, so that means you're now.
No, this was not in the policy. This was an addition and on advice of counsel, I'm recommending that we take out the addition or do not add the addition that we had proposed.
So our existing policy does not contain this line.
Yes.
Yeah. And I, I think the one, two, three, fourth paragraph there, that we are not acting as parents for unsupervised minors, right? Helps us to emphasize the proper roles and responsibilities. Okay. Further, go ahead.
Sorry, one other further question. The, the phrase vulnerable people of any age, I take it that was like a legal kind of inbuilt or something? Because to me, that creates a, a question in my mind of the definition of vulnerable people. Are we talking homeless people? Are we talking, you know, people with developmental disabilities? Are we talking about elderly? It could be a lot, I think, a lot of cases.
I don't know what the legal definition of that is, but this is something we've had in policy for a long time. So I would have to ask counsel, who luckily is here, so maybe he could chime in. But if not, we could bring it back for further review. But I'm, I'm at a loss as to how to answer that correctly.
I would let Joe speak, but I, right, it gets tricky, I think, trying to define those terms because you make a list of different situations and inevitably you leave something out that comes up. So this provides an opportunity to have dialogue, right? Your loved one wasn't, you dropped your loved one off at the library and they really need somebody with them. So it, it provides an opportunity for staff to have dialogue. It's our policy that if somebody needs a responsible person with them, that they have that person. Right? Establishing that expectation, right? Like, we could list 100 types of situations where somebody would need to have somebody accompanying them and we'd leave one out, right? That's where it gets tricky in trying to define it.
It, it's just, you know, if you, by the policy thing, we're talking about youth, that you open the door with the vulnerable by inserting that phrase in there, I would think, which, I just want, I, I just don't want us to be opened up for, you know, a policy that we enact coming back and biting us through a, if an unfortunate circumstance were to happen.
I think it's a great question because, right, it does, the implication is that it's youth based on what the policy is.
I would, I would maybe venture a solution would be to change the policy title at that point then. Unattended youth and vulnerable persons policy. I mean, it changes nothing within the policy itself and it alludes to what is in the policy.
Any other options? I'm just seeing, I'm just looking too deep, reading too much into this? Or am I not? I mean, as a policy developed person, this, I don't want to, like, kind of hack in fear of implementing policy through a fear that is unlikely to ever be realized. But by the same token, I, I think it's, a reasonable person would look at that and see things maybe a little differently. So I haven't said all that. Madam Chair. I have a motion.
Yes.
I move that we approve the unattended youth policy with the additional change of incorporating into the title unattended youth and vulnerable personnel policy with an effective date of March 1, 2024.
Thank you, Josh. Would you consider an amendment?
Last line and first paragraph.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Laura.
Josh, would you consider an amendment? You stated personnel. I think you meant persons.
So amended.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the unattended youth policy as presented with two changes, to strike the last line in paragraph one and to add vulnerable persons to the title of the policy and have the effective date be March 1st. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Laura. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number 10 on our agenda, the executive session. The executive session is not open to the public. And we would go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-2061F. We will roll call in.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Destiny.
I'm sorry. Before we move on with item 10, can I go off script for just a moment and welcome Mary Ann Saunders from the Ada Community Library to our meeting? Welcome. And she's a member of the board, so I just wanted to welcome her to Meridian Library District's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Bev, for being here. All right. So we will roll call in. Trustee Cummings. Trustee Hart. Trustee Knutson.
Aye.
Trustee Kohler.
Yes.
And I am Megan Larson and I vote yes.
Thank you. Brings us to item number 11 on our agenda, future agenda items. Of course we will consider to continue to get updates on the Pinnacle location and getting ready for that to come online. Additional items? Not seeing any but of course you can always email myself or the director for the items that you would like to be considered for a future agenda. That brings us to the end of our agenda. It is 9:40 and we are adjourned.